Tonight, as always, we want to remember those from our community who are serving so ably in defense of the liberties of the United States of America on foreign soil. And we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon each and every one of them as they so ably perform their duties. As also, we also want to remember all of our city employees, and we just ask that special guidance and blessing be showered upon them as they go upon their daily job of so ably protecting and serving the citizens of our community. Tonight, we just ask for guidance and understanding and direction, knowing that each and every member of the City Council here tonight has the very best interests of this community at their heart and soul. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman O'Brien, would you lead us to the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance. Leads to the flag of the United States of America, into the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. City Council, please call the roll.
Brown, Clark.
Here.
Alderman Atack is absent. Stark.
Here.
Chansett.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Sparks.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Alderman Callahan is absent. Homan.
Here.
Sam.
Here.
Vasiliyan.
Here.
Serone.
Here.
McFadden.
Here.
So, we have twelve of the fourteen elected members of the City Council present in accounted for us, so we have the necessary quorum to conduct business. Moving then to item number four, which are to be items removed, added, or changed on tonight's agenda. Alderman Sparks is Chairman of Governmental Services. Would you present this, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. The only change we have tonight is removing item number eighteen, the executive session for the purchase and sale of electric power. I move that we accept the agenda as amended.
Second. Moved by Alderman Sparks, second by Alderman McFadden, for the approval of the agenda as amended. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Sparks.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Homan.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Vasiliyan.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Agenda is amended, is approved. Twelve yes, no-no's, two absent. Moving then to item number five, which is presentation of tonight's consent agenda. Alderman Sparks is Chairman of Governmental Services Committee. Would you present that, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. The consent agenda is as follows: To accept and place on file: A) The Plan Commission Minutes and Zoning Board of Appeals Minutes for June 18, 2014; B) The Joint Committee of the Whole Minutes for June 10th and June 17th, 2014; C) The Building Report for June 2014; D) The Engineering Department Quarterly Report; E) The 2013 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. The approvals are: F) The July 18, 2014 payroll, the amount of $746,299.07; G) The accounts payable check register, the amount of $3,914,078.02; H) The City Council minutes for June 2nd and June 16, 2014; I) Resolution 14-79-R, amending the IGA for tri-city police records to add the Village of Elburn Police Department; J) The Resolution 14-85-R, authorizing execution of a contract with Geasphalt Systems for the 2014 pavement preservation program for $30,000; K) Resolution 14-86-R, authorizing execution of the preliminary engineering services agreement for motor fuel tax funds with Civil Tech Engineering for the Main Street Reconstruction Project for $176,093.80; L) Resolution 14-89-R, execution of Resolution for improvement of the municipality under the Illinois Highway Code for Main Street Reconstruction Project; M) Resolution 14-90-R, authorize execution of budget amendment for City of Batavia Motor Fuel Tax Act 18-47-6382; N) Approval to reject bids for the 2014 Sidewalk Incurred Replacement Program. I move accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Moved by Alderman Sparks, second by Alderman McFadden, for the approval of the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Sparks.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Homan.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Vasiliyan. Brown. Clark. Stark. Chansett. Wolf.
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved. Twelve yes, no-no's, two absent. Okay, moving then to item number six. I just checked my phone clock, which is, I think, pretty accurate. We can't start the public hearing until 7:35, but we can start it after that time, and it is 7:37 according to my clock. So, we will convene the public hearing on the proposed special service area number fifty-eight. Alderman Brown, do you want to make any introductory remarks?
Yeah, I'll make a few comments, Your Honor. This goes back to back on May 19th, when the City Council passed the ordinances of 1428 and 1429, which established the clock ticking here for these proposed SSAs. There's two special service areas proposed to act as a backup for the established homeowners' association. SSA 58 would be a new special service area that would encompass all five units of Tanglewood Hills. Tanglewood Hills currently has SSAs in place for Unit 1, Unit 4, and Unit 3. I'm sorry, Unit 3 was defeated by a petition in 2007. SSA 58 would eliminate the potential inequity where Unit 3 would not share the responsibility for covering extraordinary costs for a common area maintenance in the event of a failure of the homeowners' association to maintain these common areas. SSA 59 is proposed for Unit 5 only, and will be implemented only if the proposed SSA 58 fails. So, to break this down to common sense, or my type of language, these SSAs are established to put into some protection in case the homeowners' association, for whatever reason, in the future, fails to maintain the common areas of property. This is not anything that the city ever intends on using, but it's there as a just-in-case. This all kind of came about here this year with the passage of Unit 5. The Toll Brothers to be building in that area in Unit 5, so they are certainly well aware of this and welcoming to this SSA 58. If 58 is defeated, it would be 58, or SSA 59, that would be in effect for Unit 5, and they're aware of that also. So, what this public hearing does tonight is it opens up the opportunity for public testimony, if anybody in the audience wishes to address the committee or the council on this tonight. And then it starts the sixty-day clock ticking, where they can have conversation with staff, which I understand they would like to do. They've already been having some conversation with staff, and the languages that they're -- the wordage that they're looking at inserting into some of these, this SSA 58, seems very reasonable at this point. So, they will be working with staff between now and the end of the sixty days. The way that SSA 58 could be defeated is if a petition is taken, if a petition is drafted by the homeowners and of -- is it just the majority, Roman? Of the homeowners, fifty percent?
Fifty-one percent.
Fifty-one percent of the homeowners object to SSA 58, then 58 would not be passed, and we will move on to SSA 59, and that would be passed. But for continuity, for the entire subdivision of Tanglewood Hills to encompass the whole area, it just makes sense to work with SSA 58. So, with that, Your Honor, we'll open it up for public testimony.
All right. Does anybody in the audience wish to address the public hearing tonight on the subject of special service area number fifty-eight in the Tanglewood Hills subdivision? If you'd come forward, please, and give us your name and address for the clerk.
My name is Paul Lichter, and I live at 526 Alboraski Way in the Tanglewood Hills subdivision. Hopefully, some of my neighbors are also here, because I know some people do want to address the topics around the language that's in the SSA. There's been concerns that it's overly broad. There's been concerns of the potential for abuse. And certainly, people are well aware in the community that, you know, we already do pay a significant amount in property taxes already. And all of those things are absolutely true. What's also true is that the manner in which the City Council creates these SSAs, I believe, is a tremendous disservice to the community. The City of Batavia, as a matter of policy, and as I think all of you know, attempts to create a special service area in virtually every new subdivision at a time before the subdivision is even developed, okay? At a time when the only property owner who would even have the standing to object to the special service area is the original developer, as was the case with Oliver Hoffman in Units 1 and 4, as is the case now with Toll Brothers in Unit 5. And even that one property owner is precluded from objecting to the special service area because the development and annexation agreements that they have to sign with the city in order to build their subdivision specifically contains language that does not permit -- that requires them to support the SSA. So, they don't have the opportunity to object, even if they wanted to. That policy is deliberately designed to do one very important thing, and that's to get the taxing authority that you're seeking in place without the knowledge or the consent of the property owners who would actually have to pay the tax if it was passed, okay? And that is simply wrong. The Illinois statutes that provide for the existence of special service areas were written to be extremely favorable to municipalities, okay? SSAs, as you know, can be passed without consent of the voters. SSAs have no statutory limit on how long the SSA can live. There is no statutory limit on how large a tax can be levied under the SSA. And the state legislature, in passing that legislation, provided only a single mechanism and a single opportunity for the people who would ultimately have to pay that tax to have a voice and to have a say in its creation. And that's through the petition process, which is quite difficult. You have to get fifty-one percent of every property owner and fifty-one percent of every registered voter within the special service area. But the city's policy in how you go about doing this is deliberately designed to deprive the homeowners of even that limited opportunity to have a say and to have a voice in those taxes, okay? And that is just plain wrong. You're all bright people. You all went to school. You all presumably took American history. So, some principles about things like due process and consent of the governed, and even no taxation without representation, those principles should be familiar to all of you. July -- we just celebrated July 4th a couple of weeks ago, okay? We just saluted the American flag. July 4th is supposed to be about a whole lot more than just, you know, having barbecues and watching fireworks. People died for those principles that we're talking about. We fought a war over those principles, okay? They must have thought it was important, okay? There needs to be something more there than just the City Council's good intentions. And the fact that the City Council has a policy that says, "We're going to deprive you of those principles, but when we do it, we promise we won't abuse it," it doesn't make it any less wrong. SSAs can be created by request of the homeowners. They can be created later on in the process, when there are actually homeowners around who may want to have a voice, who may want to oppose it. And if the City Council cannot get an SSA enacted without going through legal loopholes that do an end run around due process, then maybe these backup SSAs are not something you should have, however good your intentions are, okay? Maybe this is some particular piece of power that the people you're here to represent don't think the City Council should have, and that's not to fault anyone's good intentions, right? You know, people say, "Well," when people say, "It's not the money, it's the principle." It's usually about the money. Well, in this case, as you very ably pointed out, there's really no money at stake. There's not a serious expectation that these things will actually be enacted. But there is a principle here, and it's a principle that's important. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the City Council tonight? Yes, sir. If you'd come forward and give us your name and address for the clerk, please.
My name is Jim Adamski. I live at 2482 Bird Lane. And as you just heard, first of all, let me tell you, I'm on the board, on the HOA board for Tanglewood Hills. I just heard there's questions and concerns that many of the neighbors in the area have. And I talked to Drew Rackout earlier today, and what we are asking to do is between now and the end of the sixty days, is to have a meeting with the staff, with Drew and his staff, to put some wording in the SSA so people understand, first of all, what it's all about, and secondly, what would trip it, what would invoke it, okay? There's a lot of concern about that. Independently, Paul is going about getting the signatures for the petition. We are, you know, not going to stand in the way of that. That's something that will be happening at the same time as what we're trying to do with staff. But this is something that we think we need to have clarification, we need to have some definition, and there needs to be something in this ordinance where people can look at it and understand, here's what it's for, here's what it's about, here's what'll trip it, and here's what the limits are. Without that, it just creates a lot of questions, concerns, and I think you've already heard some of those from Paul, and you may have heard some other neighbors, from other neighbors before this. So, going forward, that's what we're going to be looking to do, and hopefully, sixty days, when it comes back to you, we have something that we can all support. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Give us your name and address for the clerk, please.
Good evening. Heather Macklin. I live at 873 Twin Elms Lane in Tanglewood Hills. The policy's in place. You have SSAs over Unit 1, where I live, Unit 4. As between the current choices that you have of the two that you're looking at, where there would be a blanket one over the entire community, or one that would only be instituted over Unit 5, whether I like SSAs or not, my preference would be that it would be equitable across the community. That being said, I would also encourage all of you to look at the language changes that are being suggested, to make sure that, you know, we've heard about good intentions. The SSA could be triggered years down the road when those of you sitting here today are no longer serving, and you don't know what the intentions of those later people are going to be. Our community is already among the most heavily taxed in Batavia, and right now, we've got homes sitting on the market that can't sell. And if you talk to the realtors, the reason that they will tell you those homes aren't selling is because the potential buyers come in and they look at that tax bill and go, "Oh, God, no," and they run screaming in the opposite direction. So, think about the fact that it may not be you sitting here in ten or fifteen years when somebody says they don't like the look of the prairie, or they think the clubhouse is looking dilapidated in their personal aesthetic opinion. Make sure that there are strict guidelines and definitions going forward, so that the people who live in the community understand it, so that the people who will be sitting in your chairs understand it, and God forbid should it ever get to that point that the judge deciding any litigation that would happen over it could understand it. And that if we have those definitions in place ahead of time, that litigation won't be necessary, and we can actually have a community where that isn't going to be a hammer that's sort of sitting there hung over everybody's head and a potential worry for even further taxes on our properties. Thank you.
Anybody else? Alderman Brown, you want to make a motion to adjourn the public hearing then?
I move we adjourn the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Stark, for the adjournment of the public hearing on special service area 58. Kirk, call the roll.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sparks.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Homan.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Vasiliyan.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Okay, this public hearing on special service area 58 is adjourned. Moving to item number seven, which is public hearing scheduled for 7:40, and again, we're beyond the time, so we're within the legal limit, is the proposed special service area number 59. Alderman Brown, you want to make some introductory remarks on that one?
Just, Your Honor, that this would be for the same purpose, although it would be for only Unit 5. If special service area 58 does not pass, special service area 59 would potentially be up for passage.
Does anybody in the audience wish to address special service area number 59 in Tanglewood Hills? Yes, sir. If you'd come back up and give us your name and address for the clerk again, please.
Good evening. My name is still Paul Lichter, and I still live at 526 Alboraski Way. And I do want to reassure the City Council, I'm not simply going to repeat my earlier comments. I do have a whole new set of comments. So, for the record, I don't live in Unit 5. In fact, nobody lives in Unit 5. There's not a single homeowner. There's not a single resident, except for a couple of raccoons, and I don't think any of them are registered voters. And there's only one property owner, Toll Brothers, who plans to build, at least according to the papers filed with the city, sixty-three single unit, single-family homes in what's currently Tanglewood Hills, Unit 5. Now, I don't know if anyone from Toll Brothers is here. They may very well get up right behind me and speak out in favor of the SSA, and that is certainly their right and their privilege to do so. But it would probably mean a little bit more if they weren't obligated, under their agreement with the city, to support the SSA. And I know the city is very serious about this, because I'd like to just take the opportunity to read into the record a couple of sentences from the development and annexation agreement with the city, which is, of course, on the city's website and is a matter of public record. So, that agreement says, amongst other things, "Developers execute any such petitions necessary for the formation of SSA number 58. SSA 58 shall encompass the subject property and the original phases of the Tanglewood development that are subject to the original annexation agreement. If SSA 58 is challenged by a petition filed by those owners within SSA 58, except that developer and its subsequent owners shall not have the right to challenge SSA number 58. And the challenge is successful, then developer shall create a second SSA, SSA number 59, that would consist of the subject property only. Developers shall not object to the formation of SSA number 59." So, obviously, the city is quite serious about protecting things like the prairie grass and the common areas and the retention ponds and things like that. And I certainly agree, those things are important, but those sixty-three homeowners are also important, okay? What about them? Who protects their right to have a say in these property taxes that they would ultimately have to pay? What happened to their right to oppose this special service area, okay? Rights that were deliberately written into the law and that the city's policy deliberately sidesteps, okay? Who speaks out for them? I guess for the moment, I do, okay? So, those sixty-three families, they will be our neighbors, okay? And that means they'll go to our barbecues, they'll shop in our stores, they'll shop at Jewel, they'll certainly pay their property taxes, and as one of my neighbors said, we're already one of the most highly taxed subdivisions in Batavia. And of course, they'll send their kids to our schools, okay? And I think it's in probably sixth grade that the kids at Rotolo learn American history. So, the children of those sixty-three families who don't get a voice here tonight, they'll be learning about American history, and they'll be learning about things like due process and consent of the government. So, I would at least like to put to you that if you truly believe that enacting SSA number 59 before any of those families have even arrived in Batavia, okay, and before a single one of them has even had an opportunity to express their views, okay, has had a single opportunity to say, "Hey, I don't want this tax created on me," then I would at least suggest that the City Council stop by Rotolo one of these days and sit in on one of those American history classes, and perhaps give those kids a lesson on how local politics, okay, really works, okay? You could explain to them, for example, how the rights that they just learned about don't always apply where they live, okay? You could explain to them that I guess it's okay for their government and their elected representatives to take away some of those principles, as long as the government's heart is in the right place. So, I will promise you that if you do that, I'll be there, okay? Because frankly, I'd like to hear that explanation for myself. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address 59? Alderman Brown, you want to make another motion?
I move we close the public hearing for SSA 59.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Stark, for the conclusion of the public hearing on special service area number 59 in Tanglewood subdivision. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sparks.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Homan.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Vasiliyan.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Motion for the adjournment of the public hearing is approved. Twelve yes, no-no's, two absent. Okay, moving to item number eight, matters from the public for items not on the agenda. I do have a request from Reverend Swanson, who's in the audience here in the front row, and he has asked tonight to -- we should address the City Council, Reverend Swanson? Is that -- if you would come forward, please.
Reverend Rala Swanson, from 1623 Richter Drive in Batavia. Richter was one of police chiefs, fire chiefs of our great community, and we're indebted to him and to all of you for all the hours you spend as mayor, as councilman, as staff people, all the hours that you spend in our behalf, and we're grateful. My reason for coming is to urge the City Council to maintain the ban that was passed in about three years ago, maintain the ban on video poker gambling. That, in other words, you side with St. Charles, Geneva, and Hampton Hills, who favored the ban and have kept it going. My namesake, Rala Van Kirk, fought in World War I and was injured, and fought again in World War II, and my brother is a member of the VFW. He joined the VFW club in Nebraska at the tender age of seventy-five, and he never misses a meeting. He's very active. So, I'm not speaking against any organization in our beautiful community. I have no ill will against Mr. Richard, a very fine citizen in our community, but, folks, I have worked with people for fifty-two years in ordained ministry. I've heard it all. I've known veterans with metal plates in their skull that they will carry to their grave, and I've tried to minister to them. I've known many wonderful veterans. I've known many people, both veterans and non-veterans, who, for whatever reason, turn to addictions, getting addicted to gambling, or alcohol, or tobacco, you name it. The list is endless, and in my, all of my years in ministry, over fifty years, I guess I've heard it all. But my one point is a moral issue. Video poker gambling is highly addictive. It is one of the most addictive forms of gambling. It's because of the rapidity of the machine. It becomes -- people get hypnotized by it, and it becomes very hypnotic and very addictive. So, I hope that the City Council, when the issue comes, will vote to keep the ban, and it could always be looked at one or two or three years down the line after that. Someone may come tomorrow night, too. I'm going to come, just because I love our town, I love our city, I love all of you people, and one of my friends, I think, may be speaking to this tomorrow night. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to address the City Council tonight for any items not on our agenda? Very good. Thank you. Moving then to item number nine, which is the Main Street Minute. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to present the Main Street Minute for this evening. The summary is fifty-six Main Street volunteers donated one hundred and thirty-five hours for planning, meetings, programs, and events in June. As a part of ongoing retention meetings, Main Street met with two businesses in May to learn about their businesses and how we may help them grow. The second car show of the year took place on the Fourth of July on Houston Street. There were about eighty participants, and a few hundred spectators came by throughout the day. The event kicked off a full day of events in Batavia, which concluded with a spectacular sky concert, and kudos to the fireworks committee for the music playlist and the awesome firework display. River Street was hopping on Thursday evening with the Artisan Collective, finally being able to pop up on the street. There was live music on the street and at the New River's Edge. Bikers were on the paths, and people were walking around and eating outside on the patio. It was a great night to be downtown. Looking ahead, on Saturday, July 26, the Batavia Chamber of Commerce is hosting the chili cook-off, and they are looking for judges. I personally will be one of those judges, and I look forward to tasting much delicious If you are interested, please contact their office at six-three-zero-eight-seven-nine-seven-one-three-four for details. On Friday, August first, Music Matters will host free live music at the Riverwalk with a Motown special. Free activities start at six-thirty, and the band at seven-thirty. On Saturday, August ninth, Green Fair on the Fox will be from nine AM to three PM, and will have over seventy vendors at the Riverwalk and in these council chambers. The event features an eco-marketplace, local groups raising awareness on sustainable living, physical fitness and healthy living demonstrations, and participants will enjoy food, live music, demonstrations, and fun activities to watch and take part in. And on Saturday, August sixteenth, the Second Annual Da, or Second, I'm sorry, Downtown Dance Swing at Shannon Hall will be at the East Side Community Center. At seven-thirty, there will be a lesson, and live music starts at eight-thirty. Join us for a fun-filled booty-shaking evening to one of the hottest swing bands out of Nashville, Tennessee, the Gnarly Parkers. We are so lucky to have such a talented community, and if you are interested in getting involved or want to know more about what we do, please contact Main Street at six-three-zero-seven-six-one-three-five-two-eight or www.downtownbatavia.com. Tonight, the business of the month is the Salvaged Heart Vintage Wares at fourteen North Island Avenue. They are a new retail shop with recycled items, repainted furniture, and handmade designs that are all one-of-a-kind finds. It gives me great pleasure to introduce to you Sharon Harwick, one of the co-owners, to speak about the business. Thank you.
Hello. Hi, I know some of you, um, from being a former business owner in downtown Batavia, and it's my great pleasure to be back as a business owner again. I have been, I'm a co-owner of the Salvaged Heart Vintage Wares with Cindy Butler, and Cindy and I are both residents of Batavia, raised our kids here, and, um, are, uh, have been co-owners of another similar shop located in North Aurora for the past five years. So we do bring some experience to our business. But last fall, we were starting to think about all the exciting things happening in Batavia where we live, and we happened to see there was an opening in the, um, Island Avenue Shopping Center. Last November, we actually looked at it and fell in love with the space and the location. And as the months went by, we realized we had to open a business here, because there are so many things going on in Batavia today that are so exciting. And as a business, um, we're really happy to be, be open here. We opened April first, and as Ann said, we, we do recycled items, repurposed, uh, vintage items, um, anything old, we try to make it new again, and we try to make it functional. Uh, we have actually sixteen women that all have small businesses, they're all small business owners, kind of working out of their homes, um, but they're all experienced in this field. And, uh, we have some of the most creative women I've ever met, working or renting from us, and we're renting from the landlord. Uh, we opened April first, uh, we, we had a ribbon cutting with Mayor Shelkey in May, and we were really excited, um, to find out in May that we did, uh, already win an award with the Kane County Chronicle for the best antique shop in the Fox Valley area, and we were only open six weeks. So, um, I'm not sure, I think the fix was in, but somehow we managed to win that award. So we hope we're bringing a lot to the downtown, but in return, we're getting so much more. And, uh, we hope that you all stop in at some time in the future. We're open Tuesday through, uh, Saturday, eleven to five, and we're open Sunday, twelve to five. We are closed Mondays for a restocking and re, um, just re-merchandising day. We try to keep the shop looking fresh and bringing in new items, uh, on a regular basis. And we're also happy to be doing a pop, uh, a booth at the farmer's market once a month. Um, we're, we've got a booth at the Green Fair coming up, and I just had a booth at the Batavia Quilt and Textile Show. And, uh, so, as I said, we're happy to be part of the community, and we really invite you all to stop in and to see what we have, and it's, it's actually a very fun shop for both men and women alike. And, uh, again, we're extremely happy to be back here in, in Batavia.
Well, certainly on behalf of the city council, we want to thank you for your willingness to return and your enthusiasm and the new ideas you're bringing with you, and we appreciate your return, and wish you many years of business growth and success in our downtown area. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving to item number ten, is the appointment of Police Officer John Cole and Robert Sabarbo. And as all of you know, we don't vote on this, this is done in a, kind of a non-political process, under the civil service laws and rules of the state of Illinois by the Fire and Police Commission, which all of you appoint. And they are the ones that select and appoint the members of the Police and Fire Department that are authorized by the city council. So we, we're not voting on this tonight. But we are going to do the official swearing-in to these two gentlemen. But before we do that, I've asked Chief Shira if he would give us a little brief intro to these two gentlemen.
Thank you, Mayor. It gives me the opportunity to introduce to the city council our two newest police officers. So, uh, as I start reading the bio, Robert's going to go first, if you start walking up. Robert Sabarbo is aged twenty-four. He was appointed a probationary police officer by our Fire and Police Commission, March twenty-fourth of this year. Uh, he previously worked at the Kane County Forest Preserve. Uh, he graduated magna cum laude, uh, in December two thousand and eleven, uh, with a BS in Criminal Justice from Northern Michigan University. And he just recently graduated, specifically June twentieth, from the Suburban Law Enforcement Academy at the College of DuPage. So, very happy to have Robert here. Okay, now John. John Keel is aged twenty-five. Uh, he was appointed a probationary police officer on April eighteenth of two thousand and fourteen. Uh, he formerly worked for the Secretary of State. Uh, he actually finished his first year of law school at Northern Illinois University and actually dropped out of law school to take this job, which we're, we're thankful for and happy for. John graduated, uh, with a bachelor's from Northern Illinois University in International Relations, and he also recently graduated, in his case, from the Illinois State Police Academy on July third. So I'm very happy to welcome both of them.
Okay, if I can have you two gentlemen come up here in the center of the room, we'll get you on TV. If you want to stand over there, so I got to get you in this camera right here. This is, I've become a producer at this point, so. Roll here. If you both would raise your right hand and repeat after me, aye, and state your names.
Aye, John Neil.
I'm Robert Sabarbo.
Having been appointed?
Having been appointed. Having been appointed.
To the position of police officer?
To the position of police officer.
With the City of Batavia Police Department?
With the City of Batavia Police Department.
And the counties of Kane and DuPage?
And the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties?
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of police officer?
Of the position of police officer.
With the Batavia Police Department?
The Batavia Police Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, welcome. Would you want to make a?
Say a few words to everybody? Absolutely. Uh, I actually don't necessarily need this, I actually read the law, although unfortunately, but, okay. Actually, I just want to say thank you to the community, to the council, to Mayor, to Chief Shira. I absolutely appreciate this. I was in law school, received the call from law and technical news, and let him know, or let me know that I was on the list and being, uh, potentially offered the position, and I knew exactly where I wanted to be. So I look forward to serving this community as, to the best of my abilities, as the other states. Thank you very much.
I'd also like to thank the City of Batavia and, um, Fire and Police Commissioners, Chief Shira and FTO for being here tonight, and all the police depart, uh, police officers at the department for helping us along, and my family who came out and supported me and throughout the whole process. So, thank you to everybody.
Thank you, wish you.
Sure. Uh, my father, John Sabarbo, girlfriend, Rachel Kerkowski, my aunt, Carolyn Landrow, and brother, Nicholas Sabarbo.
Should I do that to Alex? My mother, Alex Seans. My father, Brian Keel. My girlfriend, Deanna Harold. My sister, Kathy Kellin. And my ex-husband, speaking around the corner.
Well, on behalf of the citizens of Batavia, we wish you the very best and successful and safe career with us, and, uh, twenty years from now, we hope you're here and looking back at a very, very fruitful career on behalf of the citizens of Batavia. And I think you're going to find the Batavia Police Department to be a very innovative and creative and, and strong place to be as far as a police agency, because we're very proud of the police administration and the job that the department does. So, thank you for joining the forces, and we look forward, and everything I've heard about both of you has been very high-ranking, so I'm looking forward to great things from both of you. So thank you very much. Okay, moving to item number eleven on our agenda, which is Resolution fourteen-dash-eighty-seven-dash-R, authorizing execution of preliminary engineering service agreement with graph engineering for the Deer Path Road and Main Street intersection. Improvement project, uh, costs for engineering of a hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars. Alderman Wolf, do you have this?
Yes, I do, thank you, Your Honor.
City Services?
Yes, this is, uh, an agreement with, uh, graph engineering for, uh, a fifty-fifty split for the city. So our cost will be fifty-four thousand, one sixty-two on this, and because the city is the lead agency on this project, we'll be paying the entire bill of one, one oh eight, and then get the reimbursement back from KDOT on their percentage of the cost. With that, it's going to be, uh, engineering going through and looking at the intersection out there to determine whether or not we want to do a roundabout or a regular intersection in there, depending on what will actually fit and what will work out there. Anybody have any questions? Okay. Now I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution fourteen-dash-eighty-seven-dash-R, authorizing execution of Phase One Engineering Service Agreement for Deer Path Road and Main Street Intersection Improvements with Graph Engineering.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman McFadden for the approval of Resolution fourteen-dash-eighty-seven-dash-R for the Preliminary Engineering Services with Graph Engineering for the Deer Path Road and Main Street Intersection. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Resolution fourteen-dash-eighty-seven-dash-R is approved. Twelve yes, no-nos, two absent. Moving then to item number twelve, which is Ordinance fourteen-dash-thirty-five, grant of variance for front and side setbacks and roof overhangs for residential addition to three forty-six North Batavia Avenue. Alderman Brown is chairman of Community Development, do you have this, please?
I do, Your Honor, thank you. As you mentioned, this is Ordinance fourteen-thirty-five for granting of the variance for the front and side yard setbacks, the roof overhang for a residential addition. This was, uh, discussed at the last committee of a whole meeting on July fifteenth. Prior to that, it was in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals for their findings and facts. They found that they could not pass this on, so it did come out of the Zoning Board of Appeals with a negative recommendation to the Joint Committee of a Whole. If this were to be allowed, this ordinance would allow for the south side yard setback of approximately three-point-two feet instead of the required twelve feet on the first floor, and approximately two feet instead of the required twelve feet for the second floor. It would also allow for a second floor addition, no closer than approximately forty feet, rather than the required fifty feet for the Batavia Avenue setback, and it would allow for a twelve-inch roof overhang to be approximately, uh, zero-point-seven feet from the side property line instead of the required three feet. So, community, the J-CO did have quite a lot of discussion on this, uh, both the petitioner and a neighbor both spoke to the committee. Uh, it ultimately came out of the J-CO with a negative recommendation to the city council. Because the, um, Zoning Board of Appeals did not pass this on with a positive recommendation, it would take a two-thirds majority vote by the city council to pass this ordinance. If anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, otherwise I would move, and I'll make this in the form of a positive recommendation, I would move for approval of Ordinance fourteen-dash-thirty-five.
Second. Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Wolf for the approval of Ordinance fourteen-dash-thirty-five. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Brown?
No.
Clark?
No.
Stark?
No.
Chansett?
No.
Wolf?
Yes.
Sparks?
No.
O'Brien?
No.
Homan?
No.
Sam?
No.
Vassiliyan?
No.
Serone?
No.
McFadden?
No.
So that vote is one yes, twelve, or eleven no, and two absent. So, ordinance is defeated. Okay, moving to thirteen, which is approval of a relocation incentive in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars for the Challenger Lighting Company payable upon relocation to Batavia. And Alderman Sparks, do you have this, please?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Challenger Lighting is currently housed in Elgin. They manufacture hospitality and institutional contract lighting, and their annual revenues are six million dollars. They desire to move into the Tri-City Territory, and, uh, from one of our aldermen talking to them, they joined up with the city staff here and found a building at fourteen-hundred Kingsland. It's a ninety-two-thousand-three-hundred-square-foot building, they're going to acquire it for seventy-thousand-square-feet. Building has been vacant for five years. They're looking to have forty-five to fifty full-time people. They're going to, to do the move, they're going to incur, uh, incur three-hundred-thousand dollars in capital improvements in, uh, the city to assist the company and show the city's desire for the relocation, is offering a fifteen-thousand-dollar incentive grant. The money will be available and is available in the economic development business retention budget. So what this is doing is helping this company relocate to Batavia and offset some of their fees. Um, is there anybody here from Challenger Lighting? Okay, um, well, I make a motion, uh, that we move for the approval of a relocation incentive of fifteen thousand dollars for Challenger Lighting Company, Inc.
Second. Moved by Alderman Sparks, second by Alderman Homan? I couldn't, I couldn't catch the voice there. Uh, for the approval of the fifteen-thousand-dollar incentive for Challenger Lighting, any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Resolution fourteen-dash-eighty-seven-dash-R is approved. Twelve yes, no-nos, two absent. Moving then to item number twelve, which is Ordinance fourteen-dash-thirty-five, grant of variance for front and side setbacks and roof overhangs for residential addition to three forty-six North Batavia Avenue. Alderman Brown is chairman of Community Development, do you have this, please?
I do, Your Honor, thank you. As you mentioned, this is Ordinance fourteen-thirty-five for granting of the variance for the front and side yard setbacks, the roof overhang for a residential addition. Um, this was, uh, discussed at the last committee of a whole meeting on July fifteenth. Prior to that, it was in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals for their findings and facts. They found that they could not pass this on, so it did come out of the Zoning Board of Appeals with a negative recommendation to the Joint Committee of a Whole. If this were to be allowed, this ordinance would allow for the south side yard setback of approximately three-point-two feet instead of the required twelve feet on the first floor, and approximately two feet instead of the required twelve feet for the second floor. It would also allow for a second floor addition, no closer than approximately forty feet, rather than the required fifty feet for the Batavia Avenue setback, and it would allow for a twelve-inch roof overhang to be approximately, uh, zero-point-seven feet from the side property line instead of the required three feet. So, community, the J-CO did have quite a lot of discussion on this, uh, both the petitioner and a neighbor both spoke to the committee. Uh, it ultimately came out of the J-CO with a negative recommendation to the city council.
I want to especially thank Marty Callahan on the council, who actually made the first contact for us, and then Chris Aiston, who did a very nice job working with the, the company and accompanying the mayor up to them. They were very impressed by the visit. You recall, they appeared at the last J-Cow meeting, they weren't able to come here tonight. It has nothing to do with not being very appreciative, they're working, they've got some really tough issues, they're trying to finish up to redo this building, they're putting a lot of money into it, but they had told Chris earlier today they just couldn't make it, but they wanted me to relate their appreciation to you all. I wanted to remind people that on brush collection, it actually starts today on the west side, so there's a good chance, since brush collection occurs so rapidly with the, with the new system, you may have already missed out on that. The next one for the west side will be beginning on Monday, August eighteenth. For the east side, the next pickup is August eleventh, followed by September eighth, and we'll just, the, the schedule is on our website, and if you have any questions, there's a lot of details about it on the website, or you can call Public Works. Some legislation was passed by the Illinois General Assembly to limit the city, or any city's ability, to determine what water system tap-on fees should be. These are fees that assess a charge against a new building for use of the existing infrastructure that's already been paid for by previous users, and the charges are the result of a financial analysis to determine what's fair and what's reasonable. The legislation that has been passed and sitting on the governor's desk would take away any of the city's authority to make those singular calculations, because you can imagine every city's situation is different, and to impose charges, at least the staff and, and the most municipal people feel are unreasonable. There is a very simplistic formula that says that no water tap-on fee can be in excess of one-sixth of the expected annual charges for the first year, and it just, it just doesn't make sense. John Dillon, our water and sewer superintendent, is active member of the, the local chapter of the American Waste, or American Waterworks Association, and they, along with other city government organizations, are asking that city, city legislatures let their opposition to this be known, and they've drafted a letter to be executed by the mayor opposing the legislation. And it is sitting on the governor's desk, so this can happen at any time. As you know, any time that we do impose a charge, there is to be a relationship between what is being spent and the amount of the charge, and I can tell you that our water tap-on fees are quite reasonable, if not, if not low at this point in time, but the fact is that this legislation doesn't allow you to ascertain what the situation is with the water system, it doesn't allow you to ascertain what the situation is in terms of the, the community and its ability, or its need to build infrastructure. So, we're asking, I, I would like to, I talked to the mayor about this, this afternoon, I don't know whether you have anything you'd like to add, Mayor, but we have this letter drafted, and I think we're looking for some support from the city council to have the mayor sign this and get it over to the governor.
Yeah, I would like to ask the council to pass a motion supporting the letter to be sent to the governor about this subject, because this, you know, if the state of Illinois sticks their nose into this one, then that takes away our ability to basically set water fee, or, you know, hook-on fees, and that, then that cost is going to have to be absorbed by all the existing rate payers on the utility, so, I mean, if in fact there is any difference in what we're charging versus what the costs of it are. So, we think we try to maintain this so that it's a pay-as-you-go system, and that the people who are making the payment for the hook-on are paying what is costing the city to hook them on, and nothing more. And so, we think it's a fair and honorable charge, and for the state of Illinois to come in now and start to come up with the idea that they're going to adopt a charge that's applicable to every water system in the state of Illinois, and a lot of these water systems have a lot of issues that we don't face in Batavia, I don't know how they think they're going to do this, but it's, it's just bad legislation, it's just another good example of government that's gotten out of control here a little bit, and so I guess I would ask for the council to pass a motion supporting the idea that we take this stand about the opposition to this current legislation. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman O'Brien, any discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassillion?
No.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Motion's approved, twelve yes, no-nos, two absent. Thank you very much.
My last item, we're looking at making some changes in terms of our economic development grant programs. As you may know, we have more grant programs than many of the other municipalities in the area. Because of that, we've tried to tailor them to certain situations, but some of them require review by the HBC, some of them don't, and people are sometimes required to talk to various staff members. So, what we're doing, we're going to try and streamline that process a bit, and we're going to have all of our grant programs be, at least initially, the initial contact for all those programs will be economic development, which right now is being run by Chris Aiston, our, our consultant. He'll be the first point of contact, and he'll be able to give potential business, development, business or building developers, anything they need to know and help them choose which of the grants is most appropriate for them, and then if it does require some work with the HPC, or work with the building department, he'll be able to work on a team with those people to get it through. We think this makes a lot more sense. The other good part about this is with the increased activity with buildings and plan reviews and inspections, it's, there's a lot more work coming down into the building commissioner's office, and so this will take some of that work off of his plate as well. So, I think this is a good thing, and we'll be making these changes on our website and be talking to Main Street in the chamber and kind of get that out there, and I think it'll be much easier. And that's all I have.
Any questions of the city administrator this evening?
I do. What's your consent? Regarding the, the proposed changes in the various grant programs, will you be involving the various commissioners or bodies like HPC in those conversations?
I don't think the grant, at this very moment, it's really, this is a process change, not changing the actual grants. When Chris gets a handle on all of them, he may be recommending some, some substantive changes to make them easier, then if there are, then he would certainly do that. And if the council...
I'm asking specifically about process, because I know that, that HPC was initially charged with administering the facade grant program, for example. I'd be interested in what their...
Right, they were, when we had, yeah, we had a full-time staff member who, who backed up the HPC, and that, we don't have that slot anymore, so I'm sure he will appear there and talk with them and get their input about what could be done to make it more streamlined for them as well.
That's all I'm asking, okay.
Absolutely, and anybody on the council has any ideas based on what they've seen over the years, we'd love the input, love the comments. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you. Okay, committee reports, Community Development, Alderman Brown, Chairman?
Couple meetings to announce tonight, Your Honor. Plan Commission for this coming Wednesday has been canceled, nothing on their agenda. HPC is scheduled for Monday, July twenty-eighth at five-thirty. Right now, there's nothing on their agenda, but the meeting is scheduled. The meeting tomorrow night for J-Cow, there is nothing on the agenda for street, or for CDC, other than a streetscape update, so that's all I have for meeting announcements. I did want to just mention, though, that tonight in the consent agenda, there was approval of the engineering report and the building report, and I believe everybody's had an opportunity to take a look at that. It's about a twenty-five-page document between the engineering and the building report. It's a very well-put-together document that I think not only gives the council all the information they need as to what is going on in town, but also is there for the public to see also. Some of the comments I'd like to make about it besides that is, there's a lot going on in town. This year, year-to-date, without naming all the different projects that are going on, but year-to-date, the amount of construction dollars, private construction dollars spent, or that has been permitted for, is over twelve million dollars. It's almost thirteen million dollars with the private construction dollars for new work going on in town. As in comparison, last year at this time, it was just a little bit over nine million dollars. So, we're far ahead of last year as far as construction dollars spent, and of course, along with construction dollars comes higher or more revenue, I guess you could say, from real estate taxes and sale, or, um, real estate taxes, but along with that also comes more work for the building department. Every time somebody comes in for a permit, they have to go through a review process, they work with the petitioner, they hand it on then to engineering, and if engineering is involved with the, with the process, and then engineering has to go through their whole review. So, that's where all the work comes from, that those two different departments work on, and needless to say, like I said, it's, it's gone up quite a bit this year from last year, so their workload has increased, and that's why I certainly support Bill's idea of having Chris take over the grant program, so that kind of takes a little bit of that off of Community Development's plate. But I, I have talked a little bit with Scott and Jeff Albertson on this, and Noel also, our engineer, and I think that we're doing the city a little bit disjustice by not making this a little bit more pronounced. So, I think in the future, we're going to try to put both these, somehow or another, put both these reports together so that during my report, we can talk about some of the things, or you, Your Honor, could maybe mention some of the things that are coming into town. Right now, I can say that, you know, the Aldi Corporation had just opened up their five-story office building, what, three years ago? They had completed that and moved into it, and they're now going to do a one-point-five million dollar renovation of that five-story office building that's only four years old or so. Walmart, or not Walmart, Sam's Club is going to do, I think it's a one-point-three million dollar remodel of the Sam's Club. So, those are good things to see, those are things that we don't hear about until we actually see the construction, but those are the things that I think we ought to be trying to talk about a little bit more, so the city can see that we're on the move and things are continually getting better in the city of Batavia. That's all I have for my report, Your Honor.
Public Utilities, Alderman Carr?
Yeah, there's two items on the agenda for tomorrow night's committee meeting. There's the manhole rehabilitation project and the sanitary sewer update, so those two items are on tomorrow night's Joint Committee of the Hall meeting. Other than that, I have nothing further. Thank you.
City Services, Alderman Wolf?
Thank you, Your Honor. City Services does not have anything on the J-Cow agendas until August fifth, to be the Houston Street Construction Manager. Thank you.
Government Services, Alderman Sparks?
Thank you, Your Honor. July twenty-second, tomorrow night, Government Services will be discussing the surplus stolen and lost bicycles, and also, under closed session, we'll be discussing personnel. On July twenty-ninth, J-Cow, we will begin another discussion on the J-Cow process. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, moving to item number sixteen, which is other business, members of the council? Alderman O'Brien?
I just wanted to say, last night about ten o'clock, I got woke from sleep, there was a tree branch, an oak, an oak tree lost a branch, fell on electric wire, so we had live wire in the street, and it was a big boom, and it took me about ten minutes to get outside. I went out to investigate, got dressed, and there were two police officers already had the street closed off, keeping people safe, and shortly behind them came the fire department, just to ensure that there was no power, live power on the ground, and shortly behind them came our electric utility. And I just wanted to say, you know, the two policemen, you know, I went up, introduced myself, and very professional young men, so I just want to say as, I guess as a resident of Batavia, we're, we're very fortunate, I feel fortunate that we have such professional and dedicated people, you know, representing us with the police and the fire, and with the electric utility, that they, they have to get out of bed too, and get there and get things done, and they, they took care of it and restored power, so I just wanted to make comment that we're very fortunate.
Okay, anybody else in the council? Anybody in the audience have anything further to offer? Okay, moving to item seventeen, the mayor's report. As all of the, all of us, I'm sure, get on an ongoing basis, we keep having people ask us, when is Walgreens going to start getting underway to build their new store? And I can report to you tonight that today I received a certified letter in the mail from the Illinois Pollution Environmental Protection Agency, in which they have issued a water pollution control permit to the Batavia Enterprises permitting to construct and permitting to own and operate to the city of Batavia for the construction of a new sanitary sewer two-hundred-and-forty-feet-long-by-twelve-inch sanitary sewer with three manholes, manholes serving the area between the intersections of Wilson Street and Shumway Avenue and the central part of the city of Batavia. So, this is the, this is the permit for the Walgreens store, so I can tell you that you don't obtain a permit with, like this, without significant investment in engineering services. You paid a lot of money to have all the engineering that had to be submitted to get this done, and, you know, then all the rigmarole that had to be done, that had to be reviewed and re-reviewed and whatever, so they do have the permit to build the sanitary sewer now, so I think you, we had, they, as it was explained to me on several occasions, they had to get themselves all these official approvals before they could go forward, not only through things like this, but also Walgreens as a, as the operator of the store had to sign off and approve the final building plans and whatever, so it has been somewhat of a drawn-out lengthy process to get that going, but I'm led to believe that we are getting near the day when we will start to actually see construction start taking place over there. And I think one of the first things you'll probably start to see is the construction of this, all this underground work that has to be done with all the sewers and the water line and everything else, so that is going forth. The other observation I'd like to make with you is, for some reason, this summer has been a, kind of a return home opportunity for a number of former Batavians who have come home for everything from family reunions to class reunions, to last weekend that we had, or not this past weekend, but the weekend before, we had a, a return of all, many of the former basketball players from Batavia High School had a, kind of a basketball weekend. And so, I, having been an alumnus of Batavia High School and knowing a number of these people, we've had some people stop in the office at the basketball opportunity last week. Some of the big names out of Batavia High School basketball came back, including Dan Issel and Ken Anderson, were both at the party that they had on Friday afternoon. I went, as most of you know, I went to school with those two guys, they were in, Anderson and I were in the same class, and Issel was a year ahead of us, so I know them both, and I want to share with you that in both instances, they both talked with me and indicated how impressed they were when they came back to Batavia, and specifically saw all the work that's been done in the downtown business community, and all the, with the streetscape and the work on River Street, and the flower plantings, and the work at the War Memorial, and not only them, but a number of other folks that have, I had a couple stop in that now live in Sarasota, Florida, and they were home, she'd come home for a family reunion and hadn't been here in twenty years. She told me she was blown away by what she saw, her memories of what it used to look like versus what it looks like today. So, I felt good about that, that we're getting a lot of people who kind of come back after, you know, distant time away, and are suddenly finding that they're proud to come back to